I'll call to order, and I'd like to invite all of you to please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the regular agenda as presented. Are there any council members or anyone in the audience that wishes to make any changes to the regular agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the regular agenda discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council, and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to either remove or add an item to the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for its approval.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. In the minutes of the regular city council meeting, which was held on November 10th, 2025, or before the council, again, is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to be approved as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes of the November 10th, 2025 council meeting discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have two new police officers here with us this evening, Tristan Knopf and Anthony Hug, and at this time, I'd like to ask them to come forward and will do their police officer oath of office.
And the chief can come too. Boy, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye. Tristan Knopf.
Anthony Hug.
Promise that I will humbly serve.
Promise that I will humbly serve.
All residents.
All residents.
With a response to their crisis.
With a response to their crisis.
With compassion.
With compassion.
Sincerity and concern.
Sincerity and concern.
Patience, kindness, and respect.
Patience, kindness, and respect.
I promise that I will.
I promise that I will.
At all times.
At all times.
Conduct myself in a manner.
Conduct myself in a manner.
That reflects positively.
That reflects positively.
On the Detroit Lakes Police Department and the City of Detroit Lakes.
On the Detroit Lakes Police Department and the City of Detroit Lakes.
Finally, I promise.
Finally, I promise.
To follow the policies of the Detroit Lakes Police Department.
To follow the policies of the Detroit Lakes Police Department.
Uphold the laws of our state and nation.
Uphold the laws of our state and nation.
And the ordinances of the City of Detroit Lakes.
And the ordinances of the City of Detroit Lakes.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
And that's it. Congratulations.
So, under the public hearings and comments, we've got some resolutions regarding Tristan and Anthony, and I would call on chairman, Public Safety Chairman Dolman.
Thank you, honor. Consideration to a resolution declaring the position of the part-time police officer meets all the pair of membership requirements, Tristan Knopf, I make a move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to declare the position of the part-time officer Tristan Knopf meets all PER membership requirements. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, consider to a resolution declaring the position of the part-time police officer meets all the pair of membership requirements, Anthony Hug, I make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to declare the position of the part-time officer Anthony Hug, that it meets all the PER membership requirements. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the issuance of an intoxicating liquor license and Sunday license to Woodfire Foods LLC at 811 8th Street Southeast. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue of that liquor, of those liquor licenses? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion from Chairman Sterns.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a consideration to approving the issuance of an intoxicating liquor license and a Sunday license to Woodfire Foods LLC for 2025 at 811 8th Street Southeast pursuant to their application and fees. Liquor and gambling committee discussed, and we recommend approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the intoxicating liquor license and Sunday license to Woodfire Foods. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have one individual this evening, Gary Corson, is it Corson? I'm sorry, Gary Corson wishes to speak to the council, and I'll give you just a couple of minutes, Gary, all right?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I'm here in my official capacity as the attorney for God the Father and Jesus Christ the Son and the Holy Ghost. I have a hypothetical question for all of you. If you were to hire an attorney, would you hire somebody who was going to lie about everything? Or would you hire somebody who's going to tell you the truth about everything? Unfortunately, in this country, we have, Satan has all the attorneys on his staff. God has nobody, so he appointed me as his legal counsel.
You know, I'm not going to put up with this very much longer, I'll tell you that.
Let's go back a few years, back to October 2009.
I'm going to give you one more minute, and then you're done. You understand me?
I understand you.
Okay.
But I'm tired of people telling me that I can't say my piece, okay?
Well, you're getting off on the-
You work for me, I don't work for you.
You're getting off on the wrong foot here today.
No, I'm not, I'm getting to it. I had to tell you who I was first. I'd like you to remember back to October 2009.
Ron, give me one minute.
When Nancy Pelosi made her law saying you could not know what was in the bill until after it was passed. Do you remember that? She threw away your First Amendment right to peaceably assemble and petition the government for redress of grievances, and everybody just follows right along with her because nobody cares about what your constitutional rights say. So I'd like you to remember, I'd like to rephrase a statement by Booker T. Washington when he said, "It doesn't matter how many lies you tell, it's never going to be the So I'll bring it forward about to last year. If you remember right, two months ago, the legal women voters were here screaming about the little Somalia flag and how this city council would not allow it to be-
Okay, your time, your time is up. Your time is up.
I got one more question.
We don't answer questions.
I know you don't, but I want you to think about it.
Well, you make it fast.
Is there anything wrong with thinking about questions?
What is it?
Can anybody tell me when Jim Joy or Robert Kupac came down here to Detroit Lakes to hold a hearing on the little Somalian flag? Or did they also violate your constitutional right to peaceably assemble and petition the government for a redress of grievances?
Okay, we're done.
Do you think about that? Thank you. And I'm tired of people telling me I can't take the time I need.
Okay, so we are up to the Community Development Committee agenda, and this evening, the chairman is Alderman Carlson. So Sean.
Thank you, your honor. And consideration, I'm going to have Kelsey go through our items 5A and 5B, consideration to approving a resolution approving a joint powers agreement with Lakeview Township, and a consideration to approving a resolution repealing Joint Planning Board, the resolution 2024-1217A. We'll do them as separate motions, but Kelsey, if you could-
Yeah, mayor and council, I'll try to do a brief summary on this. So about a year ago, the city council passed a resolution authorizing a joint powers board, which would have- What?
A year ago was the plan.
Yes.
He said powers.
Oh, sorry. This is why Charlie's here to correct me on this. It's been, it's been a long year.
Specific.
A joint planning board with Lakeview Township and Becker County. After that resolution, we had several meetings with representatives from both the township and the county, as really, nobody was real excited about creating a joint planning board, so we started talking about, is there other options, is there other solutions, is there a compromise to address this issue? So we went through a lot of different iterations, working with the township's attorney as well. We looked at everything from an orderly annexation agreement to other agreements, but we landed on a joint powers agreement that is included in your packet. So what the joint powers agreement would do is, it provides the city, it gives the city back some subdivision authority inside the township. If you recall, before the township adopted their own subdivision zoning controls due reference of the counties, the city used to have subdivision control within a two-mile area outside of the city limits of the city. So if you look at the map that's included in the joint powers agreement, it's obviously not two miles, it's quite a bit reduced, more targeted of an area, but really, those were part of the negotiations that took place over the last 12 months of, first of all, what was the agreement going to look like? We nailed down kind of the, the structure, what that agreement would be in the joint powers agreement, but then we had to agree on what the designated area would be that the city would have subdivision control back in. Ultimately, what's, what's in that agreement is what was mutually agreed upon. So there's two actions. First is the resolution to approve the joint powers agreement, and then the second resolution is to repeal or rescind our resolution from last year, creating the joint planning board. Our withdrawal of the joint planning board is actually a condition of the agreement, so that's why we're proposing that you approve the agreement first, and then the second resolution rescind the joint planning board resolution. That's it in a nutshell.
I think you did a great job on it in planning and powers.
And, and Kelsey, if I understand, Lakeview Township has already signed this, so if we approve this tonight, it's enacted?
My understanding is they've already approved the agreement, yes.
Okay. Any questions for Kelsey? All right, then, item 5A, consideration to approving a resolution approving a joint powers agreement with Lakeview Township. The committee met yesterday and discussed, we unanimously agree that we should approve this, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution approving a joint powers agreement with Lakeview Township. Discussion on the motion.
Just one point of clarification, is looking at that map, is everything in the gray area, then, is in Lakeview Township currently, but we would have some say of subdivision in that gray boxed out areas, correct?
That's correct, and be clear, the city council would have all the say in the subdivision control, because it's, it's not, no longer part of that joint planning board, it would go back to the city council and the planning commission for subdivision control, zoning control is still administered by the township and county.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, any further questions? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item 5B, consideration to approving a resolution repealing the joint planning board, resolution 2024-1217A. We met and agreed yesterday and agreed that we should approve this, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution repealing the joint planning board resolution. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 5C, consideration to a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 546, rezoning from R2, 1 and 2 family residents to RM multi-family residents at 204 and 220 Willow Street East Circle North Properties. This is the Lincoln School, this is the second reading. We discussed yesterday and recommend approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance 546, rezoning from R2 to RM at 204 and 220 Willow Street East. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second reading is given, and ordinance 546 is adopted.
Item 5D, consideration to a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow a car wash in a B3 district at 1365, 1369, and 1373 Winter Road. This is for Weber Motors, they are building a new quick lane, and they're going to put a publicly accessible car wash attached to that new Ten Bay facility. The planning commission met and unanimously approved it. CDC met yesterday and unanimously agreed that we should approve this, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a conditional use permit to allow a car wash at 1365, 1369, and 1373 Winter Road. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And that is it for CDC.
Okay, we'll go to the Public Works Committee Chairman Zeeman.
Okay, the first item is item A, which is, we had a discussion in regards to the world's smallest gas station, Becky Mitchell from the museum was at our meeting, she's, she's had people that's interested in maybe kind of replicating what we had here many years ago, and that's right in front of the Greystone Plaza there, but there's a lot of work to be done yet on that, so it was just the beginning stages in the talking about that. So next item is 6B, consideration to accept bids for the Washington Ballpark project in awarding to contract bids. This is for Phase 1, and I'm going to ask our administrator, Kelsey Clem, to give us an update on that.
Mayor and council, the Washington Park Phase 1 project received five bids. The low bid was from Bristling Construction. Just a little bit of background of what's included in Phase 1, it's basically all the building project. If you think of the grandstand, the dugouts, the alternate that is included, the alternate number one is for the concession stand, is all included in that Phase 1. At this point, where we're sitting budget-wise, fundraising-wise, we're in pretty good shape to do Phase 1, so our recommendation is to proceed with awarding the bid for Phase 1. This is higher than we were expecting for the Phase 1 costs, so we still have some work to do for Phase 2, whether it's, you know, paring back the scope of Phase 2 or raising more funds, but at least at this point for Phase 1, we're in good shape to proceed.
Thank you, Kelsey. And as Kelsey, we did have quite a bit of discussion on there, and I believe it said if we do get started on doing the main part of the building, it would, it would start here, the latter part of 2006, and then when would it be complete to use that? People have asked, when will we be able to use the ball field?
Yeah, so Phase 1, part of the bid document is basically be done at the end of next construction season, I think it's the end of October. As far as when they'll start, that's TBD. The Bristling is contemplating even potentially starting with some of the demo and stuff yet this winter. So the plan would be Phase 1, the building improvements, you know, the new safety netting, all that being completed next construction season by the end of 2026. Phase 1, Phase 2, which is all the field improvements, the plan is to get that out to bid here in January and February, to also hopefully do that phase, that part of the construction here in 2026 as well. To the question of when will the field be ready to be used, that's a little bit dependent upon the scope of what Phase 2 ends up being. If you end up basically regrading the whole outfield, which may be needed, because we got to put drain tile in, irrigation in, if you seed it here in 2026, even if you get seeded earlier, it might need a whole nother year before it's really ready for traffic to be on it, which has the potential then that you would lose the ball field really for '26 and potentially for '27, but that's to be determined based upon the scope of the Phase 2 improvements and how quickly they can be done and how quickly turf can get established.
Thank you, and like Kelsey said, it's a work in progress, but right now, I'd like to make bids for the Washington Ballpark, Phase 1, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the low bid for the Washington Ballpark project, Phase 1. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is C, consideration of resolution accepting a preliminary engineering report and setting an improvement hearing for Rossman Avenue Street and Utility Improvements, and I want to call on John Pratt, our city engineer, to give us an update.
Good evening, mayor and council. In your packets, the preliminary engineering report for Rossman Avenue, just a quick flyover on that project. I think I mentioned it during our capital improvement planning process, but at that time, we had that project pushed out the ways, I think there was maybe even a TBD on it, while we were doing some ongoing investigation, and long story short, through that investigation, determined that we've got some fairly significant concerns with the condition of the water main. Basically, we're getting water main breaks, and did some more voluntary investigation, if you will, potholing that water main. We've got bolts holding that cast iron pipe together that are not bolts anymore. That is a pretty substantial or significant water main within the distribution system just because of where it's positioned between the tower and the water treatment plant, and its size, and things like that. So upon learning that, we sort of bumped this up to look at a project for next year for a portion of Rossman, and so the portion that we're looking at here is, is between Willow Street and Reynolds, it's not a terribly large project. Went through the exercise of trying to determine, you know, were we just going to go in and replace the water main? I think that was the initial thought, maybe even hope. As we got into this further, for a variety of reasons, it became pretty apparent that no, we really ought to do a full reconstruction of the streets and the utilities within that area. Otherwise, we were going to end up sort of with infrastructure, with sort of offsetting ages, where we might run into a scenario that, you know, we rebuild a portion of the street or all of the street, but the wat, the sanitary sewer's still got 50 years of life on it already, it is PVC, but we're going to be back in there in 10 or 15 years, replacing that before the street runs its, its course. So the recommendation was to do a full reconstruction, which would be the street, curb and gutter, sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer for that, that portion of Rossman. Total project cost is about $1.5 million. The way that gets split out between the city and property owners is about $1 million would go on the city side of the ledger, and about $500,000 would be assessed to the adjacent property owners. What that results in in the way of specials, from an estimate standpoint, you know, for a 50-foot lot, folks would be looking at about $16,500. For an assessment on a 100-foot lot, about $23,000. Just to give you some comparison, those are both right in line with a couple of more recent projects, including Forest, and then the residential area of West Downtown on Fraser East Street, so in line with those. This is the first step in the process, adopting the report, and then we would call for the hearing at the, at the January council meeting and notify all the adjacent property owners.
Okay, thank you, John. Committee's reviewed this, and I've moved to give consideration the resolution accepting the preliminary engineering report and setting an improvement hearing for the Rossman Avenue Street and Utility Improvement Project for next month, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the preliminary engineering report and setting an improvement hearing for the Rossman Avenue Street Utility Improvement Project. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, next item is D, consideration to resolution approving the application for the local road improvement program, LRIP, relative to funding assistance for multi-use trails and improvements for Westlake Drive, Phase 4, Pelican River to Long Bridge Road. I'm going to call on John Pratt again to give us an update on that.
Yeah, mayor and council, again, this is sort of a project that just sort of recently came to light. The background on this is Becker County has this portion of Westlake Drive included in their five-year capital improvement plan, and so that would be from the Pelican River to Cambridge Road or just past Long Bridge Road. We're kind of calling this Phase 4 of Westlake Drive. They had planned on doing a full-depth reclamation on just the pavement portion of that, but it struck us as probably a pretty good opportunity to maybe look at extending our trail network a bit further from where we left off at the river there and getting it up to at least Long Bridge Road. That type of project lends itself well to be able to maybe make a shift in a curb alignment there and make, make some space for a separated trail, look very similar to what you see elsewhere on, on Westlake Drive. County was supportive of the idea, and the concept is to apply for grant dollars through the LRIP program through MINDOT to fund what would be that additional cost associated with the trail. In other words, it doesn't really burden the county any by adding this trail, we would try to cover those added costs through this grant. So in total here, we're looking at applying for about $730,000. What the city's going to be committed to would be about $130,000 of that cost that would be allocated to the city, and then the balance would be, fall onto the county side of things. So it's just a funding application at this point, we'll see where it goes, if we're successful, more to come, but certainly take any questions.
Any questions for John? Okay.
Okay, thanks, John. Then the committee has reviewed this, and we move to give a consideration of the resolution approving the application for the local road improvement program, LRIP, for the grant relative to funding assistance for multi-use trail improvements on Westlake Drive, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution approving the application to the local road improvement program for multi-use trail along Westlake Drive, Phase 4. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and the last item, your honor, is consideration accepting the city engineer's monthly report status, and John?
Sure, mayor and council, most things are obviously pretty well wrapped up here, I'll just hit on a few highlights and where we're at with some things, but Southwood Shore Estates, we're just going to have a wear course in the spring on that. The Water Tower project, that's effectively at seasonal suspension at this point, I don't expect we'll see any activity on that until probably around March, depending on what spring conditions look like, but that'll stay at a standstill for a while. Heartland Trail, contractor did get that effectively completed right before things started to freeze up, so that one is pretty much done, other than some turf maintenance. Forest Street, same boat, just some turf, but we're probably working on a final payment for that real shortly. Westlake Drive, Phase 3, which again includes the city beach improvements, still waiting for final authorization unfortunately from MINDOT's central office down in the metro before we can move into the next phase of this, which would be bidding it. We're effectively all ready, just kind of sitting around waiting for MINDOT, had some communication with them this week, I expect we're going to get that any day, I've been hearing that for a couple of weeks now, but I do think we're going to get it any day. So that's, what that's doing is setting us up for a bid opening on the core or the roadway project around January 20 something, rather, and then we'll be opening the beach contract about a week later. So means by the end of January, we should have bids in hand, we'd be taking that to the city council, then the county commission for the February meetings, and hopefully awarding a contract and moving in towards construction on that. DMRA, a lot of the legacy grant projects are completed, about the only thing that's being done out there at this point is just still working on the treehouse element of that, but the parking lot and trails and snowmaking and all that stuff is up and running and functional, and they're using it all right now. Shorewood Drive, that one's buttoned up, other than turf, nothing to, nothing new to say about the Highway 10 East Shore Drive intersection study. 270th Avenue, we're under design for that right now, I might be bringing that for council approval in January, we're getting closer on finishing that one up. Lynnview Estates, seasonal suspension, they got all the sewer and water in, and just need to build the road next year, and we already talked about Rossman Avenue, so any questions? And we already talked about Rossman Avenue, so any questions?
Okay, go ahead and I'll make a motion then to accept John's report and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the city engineer's monthly project status report. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I've got one other thing, Your Honor. I'd like to call on John King, says we've got a lot of snow out there right now and I'd like to have him explain emergency snow routes and so forth, if he could give us an update on that and what people are supposed to do this time of year when we get all this snow.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have our first snow emergency. Hopefully you saw that for tomorrow morning. We were out twice today and we'll be out again four o'clock tomorrow morning, but with the snow emergency, make sure your vehicles are off the road and it's a good, good time to remind people to please have your vehicles off the road, even if we don't call a snow emergency and make sure your sidewalks are cleaned.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. And that'll be all for me there.
All right, sounds good. We'll move to the Finance Committee Agenda, Chairman Bokey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item, moving to item 7A, consideration approving personnel policy updates.
Matt. Item 7A, we're going to consider approving the personnel policy updates, Mr. Clem.
Mayor and Council, I'll just kind of whip through these. A lot of the personnel policy updates are related to some statutory changes relating to work hours and rest periods. Vacation leave, we are removing the requirement that you have to complete your probationary period to be able to use your accrued vacation. That is a loosening up of our current rules. Along with that, with vacation, we're going to allow a carryover of up to one year of the previous year's vacation accrual going forward. And then paid family leave is the big one, so that was a big add to our personnel policy. Again, basically conforms to statute. One thing worth noting, the city, we got a better rate going through a third-party vendor through MetLife, so we are not utilizing the state plan. We'll be going through MetLife and all the terms of how that paid family leave is spelled out in the personnel policy. I think that's about it.
Thank you. We discussed this at Finance Committee, it was a unanimous decision and I so move.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the personnel policy updates. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7B, consideration to approving the architect agreement with JLG Architects for the Pavilion Project. Mr. Clem?
Mayor and Council, a couple of months ago, the council approved, working with JLG and negotiating a final architect agreement for the work at the Pavilion and City Beach Project. Over the last few months, have they been able to work through kind of their preliminary design and kind of narrow in on what the scope of the project is? We've been able to work on some of the legalese, if you would, of the agreement as well and finally negotiate a lump sum fee that's spelled out in the agreement, along with, again, some changes to the document itself.
Thank you. With that, we discussed at length at the Finance Committee, we were unanimous decision and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve an architect agreement with JLG Architects for the Pavilion Project. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7C, consideration of a resolution approving the 2025 year-end fund transfers. These were in packet. Heidi, anything to add?
Um, not really, just that these are budgeted transfers from the Stormwater Fund to various debt service funds for the Stormwater Fund to pay for their portion of those debt service payments for the year 2025.
Thank you. Discussed again at Finance Committee, we so move, or excuse me, I so move.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution approving the 2025 year-end fund transfers. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 7D, consideration to a resolution approving the 2026 fee schedule. We did have some discussion on this. If you go to page 328 of your packet, it was discussed about the administrative penalty for the cannabis being $150, but the administrative penalty being $200. Mr. Ramstead, any resolve to that?
Sure. Statutory maximum of $300.
Okay.
You could raise that administrative penalty up to that.
There was discussion at Finance about making those two dollars match. At that point, I think we'd, with the recommendation of Finance Committee, raise that $150 to $200 to match that. Is that a fair assessment at Finance?
Correct.
Okay. With that change, we would, I would move this for approval.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution establishing the 2026 fee schedule with one change that was noted by Alderman Bokey. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 7E, consideration of a resolution, resolution establishing 2026 pay rates for the DL Fire Department. This was in your packet as well. This is the same pay rates as in '25, so no movement there. Discussed at the Finance Committee, we're all in unanimous recommendation and I so move.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution establishing the 2026 pay rates for the Detroit Lakes Fire Department. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7F, consideration approving the union contract with LES for '26 through '28. Mr. Clem?
Mayor and Council, maybe I'll start with just providing a little bit of background. So the city of Detroit Lakes has four bargaining units. On the agenda is contracts with two of them. LES is our patrol officers in the police department. AFSCME is, represents our employees in the public works department and in liquor store. And then we have MPEA is another bargaining unit that represents the sergeants in the police department. And then lastly is IBEW, they represent all of our electric employees in the electric department. So we've been meeting with, well, three of the four groups, we're meeting with MPEA for the first time this Thursday, have had several negotiating sessions as we are at the tail end of a three-year contract, ends at the end of the year. The proposal in your packet is, again, a union contract for another three years with both LES and with AFSCME. I can go into more detail and answer questions, but I'll probably just jump right to, you know, the wage consideration. These COLAs include basically a 4% COLA for next year, a 3.5% the year after, and then 3% in 2028, in the last year of the contract, along with, again, health insurance increases are also negotiated as part of the contract. But I'll leave it brief, but if you have more questions, I can answer.
Thank you. This was discussed at Finance and I so move.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to approve a union contract with the LES Union for 2026 through '28. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. 7G, consideration of approving the union contract with AFSCME for '26 through '28. There again, Mr. Clem, any different?
Same summary.
Yep. And heck of a summary, too. Thank you. There again, was discussed at Finance and I so moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve a union contract with the AFSCME Union for 2026 through '28. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Nothing further.
Thank you. So we are up to the public safety. Is there anything on there, Chairman Dolman?
No, Your Honor.
All right. Liquor Gambling Control Committee, Chairman Sterns.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have item 9A. We're visited by the Propel DL Committee. They had a request to, over a three-weekend period, have a liquor license for on the beach. During those periods stated on the agenda, they would, it would be in a fenced-off area, so the Liquor and Gambling Control Committee discussed it, felt that it was a reasonable request, recommend for approval and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the issuance of a temporary intoxicating license to Propel DL for some dates in February in the city, in the city beach for Polarfest. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We have item 9A1, which is also an additional request from Propel DL. Little uncommon, but it was one we had a discussion on. They were asking for a waiver on the licensing fees. Instead of it being $150 total, as mentioned in the, in the request, there are three permits of $150 each, so for a total of $450. After some discussion on that, like I say, it's not very common that this would be waived, but the thought was that in exchange for doing some in-kind exchange for up to $1,000 sponsorship from Propel DL, that the committee felt comfortable with that. So we have consideration to the request from Propel DL to waive their licensing fees and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the request from Propel DL to waive their license fees. Discussion?
I just wanted to say that what we did for Propel here is very much what we do with the JCs in the summertime for the water carnival. This group helps put on all these events down there, and that's what that's all about.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And there is nothing from the Public Utilities Commission, correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Anything from city administration? Kelsey?
Can't think of anything. I think it's in your calendar here, we got January 6, we host a joint governance meeting. If you have anything you want on the agenda or any speakers you might be thinking of, let me know. January 6 is also our annual meeting date, so we'll see you early in the morning and late in the afternoon.
Okay. I'm still looking for someone to serve on the Arts and Culture Commission, if anyone has a recommendation. I would like to recommend the reappointment of Jenna Swartz to the Planning Commission, and I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Jenna to the Planning Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I would also like to recommend the reappointment of Tom Cleavy to the Police Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Tom to the Police Civil Service Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. A few announcements, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Action Day at the state capitol is March 25. If you're interested in attending, please let Carrie know. The League of Minnesota Cities City Day on the Hill is March 11. If you're interested in attending, please let Carrie know. Next week, on the 16th, at 2:45, the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train will be here in Detroit Lakes, and they're always making a nice donation to our food pantry, and it's just a really fun event. The Elected Leaders Institute with the League of Minnesota Cities is in February, and you can let Carrie know if you're interested in attending. As Kelsey mentioned, the, on your agenda, the 2026 joint governance meeting dates are listed, as well as the 2026 city council meeting dates are listed also. And I couldn't stretch it out anymore. We could have let Gary talk a little longer, I suppose. Anything further from the council? Craig? Aaron?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, Ron?
Well, I just want to wish everybody a very, very Christmas and happy holidays, but I also am excited to see two new police officers for Detroit Lakes, and we're very fortunate to get two young men, and a lot of cities are having a hard time getting police officers, and we're able to sign up two tonight, so that makes me feel real good.
And they look like they're 15 years old.
Yeah. They look young, but that's good.
Yeah. Jackie?
Uh, no, nothing.
Okay, Matt?
No, sir.
Mike?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Sean, I'd like to say thank Charlie and Dylan for always telling us the truth, even when it hurts.
Okay. Jay?
No, I'm good.
All right, well, you just have to wait a little bit because at 6:01, Heidi's going to present our truth in taxation information. So we'll just take a little break here and reconvene at 6:01. I'll call the meeting back to order, and it's 6:01. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Heidi to present our 2026 budget tax levy pursuant to the truth in taxation requirements. Heidi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So I will do a presentation here, kind of that I do each year, and then there are a couple of resolutions that the council should consider regarding the budget and levy. So I'll just dive right in. So just to kind of go over our property taxes and kind of how all of that works, I'll go over a few definitions first. So first is estimated market value, that's the total valuation of your property. Then there's taxable market value, that's the actual valuation on your property that is subject to property tax. Next is net tax capacity, that is your taxable market value times the property class rate, so we'll go over that a little bit later, but that's another term that we'll use. And then levy, that is the amount the city determines that's needed from property taxes to be able to function the next year. And then tax rate is the levy divided by the total tax capacity for the city, and that's what we use to calculate your actual tax bill and tax obligation to the city each year. So just a general overview of the Minnesota property tax system, so as of January 1st, the assessor determines your property valuation, and 2026 taxes are determined based on evaluation as of January 1st of 2025, so there is quite a lag there in terms of timing. Properties are not taxed directly on the value, but rather on that tax capacity that I mentioned in the earlier slide. And then different types of property are taxed differently. Multiplying the taxable market value by the class rate arrives at the tax capacity, as I had mentioned earlier. And for instance, if you're a residential homestead property, you have 1% of the first $500,000, and then 1.25% of everything thereafter is how your tax capacity is calculated. On commercial industrial properties, 1.5% of the first $150,000, and then it's 2% of everything over that. Apartments, for more units, it's 1.25% of the entire valuation that's taxable. So just some examples of how things differ from types of properties to types of properties. So the overall timeline for determining property taxes, so in March or April, valuation notices are sent by the county to property owners, and then in April or May, the local board of appeal happens, that is when property owners can appeal their property valuation, either in writing or in person. And that's the time where that can happen, that does not happen at this meeting. In September, the city council must approve the preliminary budget and levy that has to be adopted by state statute by the end of September. In November, then the county sends out proposed property tax notices for the next year based on that preliminary budget and levy that the council then adopted back in September, and based on those valuation notices that were sent out earlier in the year to give folks a sneak peek of what their tax bill would look like for the following year. And then in December, what we're doing right now, the city holds the meeting for the public discussion on the final budget and levy, and then if everything looks good, then the council would adopt the final budget and levy at that point. So what do the property tax dollars pay for? Obviously, it's not just the city services that are on your tax bill, it's, it's the city, the county, the school district, and then other special taxing districts. And the breakdown is shown here, so approximately 30% of your, of your property tax dollars go to the county, approximately 42% go to the city, and 27% go to the school district, if you're in Detroit Lakes School District. And then 1% goes to other special taxing districts, like the Becker County Economic Development Authority, and then the Watershed District, and then the Detroit Lakes HRA. This is just an example of a 2025 property tax statement, and just the, the blue arrows here are pointing out some certain things you might want to look at and note. So right here, we'll show you the Becker County Port- So, right here, we'll show you the Becker County portion of your tax bill. Here is the City of Detroit Lakes portion, and then here's the school district portion. Below that, obviously, the, the special taxing district portion. And this is an actual bill of someone's. And then up here is the valuation. In the upper right-hand corner is the valuation information for that property. So, you'll see the valuation from twenty-four to twenty-five, the change that happened. And then there's also a homestead exclusion for any property that's below a certain amount. You have a portion of your value that is excluded from being taxed if you are a homestead property. So, the homestead exclusion works in that for homesteads valued at ninety-five thousand or less, the exclusion is forty percent of the market value. So, you just get forty percent of your market value is excluded from being taxed right off the bat. The max exclusion is at that ninety-five thousand dollar amount, and that max exclusion is thirty-eight thousand dollars. After ninety-five thousand dollars in value, as you go up in value, your exclusion is reduced, and that phases out at five hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars in value. So, that was increased somewhat back into twenty-twenty-four, so twenty-twenty-five taxes were the first year of that increase happening. But as you can see, once you hit that, hit that peak, and then say your valuation is, you know, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, your exclusion amount is somewhere right around maybe twenty-two thousand dollars in valuation is excluded from being taxed. So, calculating, you, you couldn't calculate your own exclusion if you'd like to. I'm kind of a nerd, so obviously I can do that type of thing and will do that type of thing, but just an example here of how you can do that, and this presentation will be on our website if anyone would like to see this going forward. But this calculation just shows an example of a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar homestead property. You take the max exclusion, you start there, and then you take your valuation minus that ninety-five thousand, that where that max hits. So, you end up with a hundred and eighty-five thousand left over. Anything over that max exclusion amount is reduced by nine percent. So, you take the one eighty-five times nine percent, you get sixteen, six fifty. Take the thirty-eight thousand minus sixteen, six fifty, that's your final exclusion amount. So, you take two eighty minus the twenty-one, three fifty, that's your taxable market value. So, that's how that's calculated. And then if you're a residential homestead property, to get to your next net tax capacity, you multiply your valuation times one percent, because you're under five hundred thousand. That's how you come up with that net tax capacity of two thousand five hundred eighty-seven. So, this is just a graph that shows the city's net tax capacity and adjusted net tax capacity, which is the net tax capacity less T I F over the last several years. And as you can see, you know, we've grown a lot in property valuations, and certainly a lot in the last, you know, just handful of years. We've had very, very steep increases in property valuations here in Detroit Lakes, but that's not unique to us. That's happened statewide, I would say, but certainly something that we're thinking is, you know, maybe going to plateau a little bit, or at least not increase quite as, as significantly as it has the past couple of years. So, on the budget side of things, major factors in our twenty-twenty-six budget, as we were putting this together, we started off with an L G A, Local Government Aid, decrease of a hundred thousand dollars right off the bat. So, just some factors in the formula calculated us to have less state aid than we had in twenty-twenty-five, so that's what was the starting point for us. Other factors included increasing our levy to help fund the city's portion of a match for a large grant that we received from the state for rehabbing the, the library's roof and exterior, and then some interior improvements. So, we increased the levy twenty-five thousand for that. The Lake Agassy Regional Library contract increased somewhat significantly this year, so that added another nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars to the levy. And, and some good news, we did still have some public safety aid funds on hand that we could use to offset some costs, so we did do that in this budget to offset the costs of one police officer, and then the difference between the migration of one of our sergeant positions to the deputy chief position, which happened in twenty-twenty-five. Also included in the twenty-six budget, we had Public Works. We moved the, the Jetter duties into, from the sewer fund into the public work, or I'm sorry, from the Public Works into the sewer fund. So, the Public Works funds had to absorb a half of, one half of an F T E in the general fund, which, which impacted that about the tune of fifty-seven thousand dollars. We also had some reorganization in some positions in community development and planning and zoning, and so that affected the levy in that it decreased the levy in the general fund and increased the levy in the Development Authority Fund with a net result of adding some to the levy. We have a capital equipment levy increase of fifty thousand dollars to help fund equipment replacement that needed to happen, and then next year is also an election year. So, every other year, we have to include a budget for election items. So, that is included as well. This is probably really hard to see, but it is a summary of the general fund budget and all the different departments, and it just shows a change from the twenty, sorry, the heading should say twenty-five budget, but a change in dollars and a change in percent from the previous budget. You'll notice that the budget isn't a balanced budget, because we are using some of that public safety aid to, to supplement the, the property taxes and other revenue sources. So, it is not a balanced budget, because we are using some of that fund balance. Speaking of fund balance, this graph shows the historic, all historical, historically where we've been in the general fund as far as fund balance and unassigned fund balance. So, that's a really key factor in terms of the state, State Auditor's Office wants cities, or suggests that cities be between thirty-five and fifty percent of the next year's expenditures, have that in an unassigned fund balance in order to be fiscally solvent, and, and we are certainly within those parameters. You'll notice our fund balance has come down over the past couple of years. That's been intentional. We've had some ARPA funds and certain things like that, that we've, we received and then have now spent down finally completely. And so, we're now in a, in a position where this number really shouldn't be moving a whole lot from where it is now at, as of the end of twenty-twenty-four. One of the positive things in our budget is obviously always our enterprise fund transfers. We're fortunate to have an electric utility and a liquor fund that do well for us and are able to transfer funds over to the general fund and, and provide a direct offset to the property tax levy. That's very significant for us. And so, the electric utility is transferring six hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars in twenty-twenty-six, and the liquor fund is transferring six hundred and ninety thousand in twenty-twenty-six. So, that is a direct reduction of the property tax levy, and without that, the tax levy would have to be fifteen point seven six percent higher if we did not have those transfers. So, makes a huge difference having those enterprise funds within the city. On the screen is a proposed, the proposed tax levy and where that all goes. So, the total levy is nine million, two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. It's an increase of six point four six percent from the twenty-five levy, and this is just how it's all divvied out and where it's going to. It's the same levy amount that was presented and approved at the preliminary levy in September. Again, that same information, but just all of the numbers and where that's all going. Again, a six point four six percent increase. This graph shows the tax capacity, as we had spoken about earlier, the property tax levy, that's what the city determines that we need to take in in property taxes to function, and then also the tax rate, which is how much is, is charged toward a person's tax capacity to determine their tax bill. And so, these all sort of are in relation, excuse me, to one another. And as you can see, our property tax rate has been extremely consistent over the, over the long haul here since twenty-eleven. Very consistent, hovering everywhere from, you know, about that thirty-five percent up to maybe forty-two-ish percent, but really staying very consistent, and that's really what we want to see. We don't want to see huge peaks and valleys, because that ends up being, I think, more detrimental to, to the taxpayers that way. Also, you'll notice our property tax levy is, you know, there are no huge peaks and valleys there either. I think we try to keep that very consistent, and that's done intentionally, so that we can, you know, keep up with our street projects and things like that, and, and still try to get things accomplished while, while not, you know, making huge knee-jerk reactions from one year to the next. How do we compare to other cities? So, we like to take a look at how we compare to other cities, just to see how we are in terms of benchmarking ourselves. So, Detroit Lakes is, is right here on the graph. You'll notice the blue lines are the local government aid that all the different cities that are on the graph receive. The orange line, lines are the certified levy for twenty-twenty-five. Obviously, our L G A is extremely low compared to everyone else, except Baxter's lower than us. And then our levy obviously has to make up the difference of what we don't receive in L G As, so it just kind of goes to show that we really don't rely a whole lot on L G A or, or local government aid for our operations. So, the city's net tax capacity rate, our tax rate, I've got tax rates here for twenty-twenty-five, and then I've got our estimated twenty-twenty-six tax rate. Our twenty-twenty-five tax rate is thirty-nine point eight zero percent, and then our estimated twenty-six tax rate is going down just ever so slightly at thirty-nine point seven eight percent. So, very consistent once again. And then what does that mean for an individual's property taxes? So, what does that really boil down to? Will someone's taxes increase? Because I talk about a levy increase, I talk about, you know, valuation increases, but what does that really mean? So, I give you an example. A residential homestead property that is, again, valued at that two hundred and eighty thousand, we already did the homestead market value exclusion calculation earlier, so we know what that taxable market value is, we know what the tax capacity is, and then now I have applied this tax rate that I've just come up with and, and told you about. This is what your city portion of your property taxes would be for twenty-twenty-six. So, it'd be a thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. And if your value was consistent from twenty-five to twenty-six, your property taxes would decrease about fifty-five cents. So, very consistent from the previous year. And again, this is just the city portion of your property taxes. This does not include the county, the school district, or any of those special taxing, taxing districts, and it also doesn't include special assessments. Those are separate. So, when we break that down and compare that to other services that folks pay for, I don't know about you guys, but I pay for internet, it's about sixty-nine dollars a month. Compare that to that thousand, twenty-eight dollars annually, or that eighty-five dollars, eighty-six dollars a month. Again, on, on this side, you're looking at, you know, cell phones, about sixty dollars a month, live streaming cable TV service, somewhere around that eighty-nine, ninety dollars a month. So, really, if you're looking at all the services that you get from the city as far as parks and, you know, street cleanings and, and snow removal and, you know, all of those types of things, that's what we provide. Law enforcement, sorry, Chief Todd. Fire protection, the big ones, yes, very big ones. Yeah. On the commercial industrial side, I have an example here. It's just a five hundred thousand dollar example. There really isn't a rhyme or reason why I chose that five hundred thousand figure just as an example. So, this property would pay three thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-seven cents in twenty-twenty-six, and again, it would be very consistent. It'd be a decrease of about a dollar ninety-six from the previous year if the value stayed the same. So, once again, kind of depends on, on each person's situation, and I, I looked at some real-life examples of actually all the council members' homes, and it was a really a mixed bag of where valuations went. Some went up, some went down, and, and honestly, yeah, so it, it really depends on what your specific situation entails, but overall, the city's, what we're doing as far as the, setting the budget and levy, that shouldn't impact your property taxes this year. It would be mostly, it would be just what happens with your valuation is what is really impacting your property taxes from the city perspective. If folks are looking for property tax relief or need some relief, there are some options. So, there is obviously that homestead market value exclusion program. So, if people do not have their property homesteaded and their value is five hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred or less, they should certainly make sure that they homestead it if they can. There is the property tax refund program, and there's targeting property tax refund, special property tax refund programs for folks that have larger increases in their taxes. There are blind veteran, disabled, homestead classifications, senior citizen property deferral programs and things like that at the county auditor's office, and who can help you out with that if, if you so need those services. And again, the twenty-twenty-six complete budget will be on the city's website. I'd be happy to print off somebody a hard copy if they're so interested, or talk somebody's ear off as well here at City Hall or on the phone or wherever if you're, if you're interested. So, with that, I would take any questions.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or wishes to make any comments about our budget and tax levy? No? Okay, any questions from the council? Thank you, Heidi. And I would call on the Finance Chair, Bulkey, for some motions.
Thank you, Mayor. Item C one, consideration to a resolution adopting the final twenty-twenty-six budget and final twenty-twenty-five tax levy, levy collectible in twenty-twenty-six. There was a ton of meetings throughout the summer that we all attended looking at this budget, a lot of discussion on this. It came down to a, a recommendation, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution adopting the final two thousand and twenty-six budget and the final two thousand and twenty-five tax levy collectible in two thousand and twenty-six. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item C two, consideration to the resolution granting city council consent for final tax payable to twenty-twenty-six H R A levy. This, again, is a taxing entity that we passed along to the H R A, discussed finance, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution granting city council consent for final taxes payable for the two thousand and twenty-six H R A levy. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The business of this council has come to a conclusion. The meeting's adjourned.